Thank you. First on the agenda this evening is the agenda approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, moving on to public comment. This is the time, the first time set aside this evening for public comment. During public comment, anyone can speak. We ask if you are speaking as an individual. You limit your comments to three minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, we ask you to limit your comments to five minutes. And if you do wish to speak at public comment when we call on you and you approach the lectern, please identify yourself by name and address. We did have a sign up sheet. We'll start from the sign up sheet, and then if you didn't sign up, there's still an opportunity. We'll call from the floor. But Jessie Reynolds signed up, and if you'd like to go first, please approach the lectern there.
Hi. I'm Jessie Reynolds. I live at 417 Cookie Court. And I have a proposal on behalf of some students, sophomore students, at First Flight High School. And I apologize in advance if I mess up. This is really intimidating. Okay. So we had an idea that we could have sidewalks along the west side of US 158 in Kill Devil Hills. And upon taking this leg to Greg Lloyd, the town planner, we found out that there was already a plan set that was passed in 2011, saying that they had a plan for this. And we were kind of like, well, why hasn't it happened? So we decided to go ahead and come here and explain to you why we think it should happen in the next five or so years, we should at least start on this project. And the benefits would be, it would definitely make our town safer for visitors and locals alike. And I know a lot more visitors would want to come if we had sidewalks because they'd want to walk around and visit the shops, which would also increase their revenue, which is very important to the economy of Kill Devil Hills. And it would also lower fuel emissions, which everyone wants to go green now. And, yeah. And we also have some estimated costs that are listed in the Kill Devil Hills pedestrian plan, which was passed in 2011. And it's from Collington Road to Eighth Street, which is the next headline, around $305,000. And the rest of those are about that same amount, between $300,000 and $450,000. And there's also a lot of possible funding available, which are all also listed in the KDH pedestrian plan. And I don't wish to, you know, say something that you already know. But some ideas that we had, an idea we had that wasn't found in there was access fees, which would be kind of like, if a business, since the sidewalk would go in front of it, it would attract more people to it, you could tax them or have like an annual fee that they would pay to the town to help pay back for the sidewalks. And there's also the governor's highway safety podium, which is listed in there on page 86. And if there's proof of fatalities or injuries or crashes, such in the Collington Highway intersection, Collington intersection, where the crosses are, that could definitely provide funding for us. And there's also many other possible fundings, such as the sidewalk program, also listed on page 86. And the Safe Route to School Program, which would do within two miles of the First Flight Middle School and Elementary School, which are right, I can't tell direction from here, right outside of here. And so we've definitely had a lot of room there. And I just, and we also have petitions that we got. It's about 300 people that we got to sign them. We put them in various businesses within the Kill Devil Hills line, and we took them around school. And some people knocked on doors. And, yeah. Just like to propose it.
Thank you very much.
Do you want the petitions?
Yes, please.
Yes, please.
Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening at public comment? Yes.
Mike Lowack, 106 Port Hole Court. I've got three items. I'll be really brief, I promise. The first one, the school kids that spoke last time about the switching to recycling, I think we really should take a good look at that. Put together a committee. I'd be happy to volunteer as a liaison if necessary. But I really think we should peel that onion a little bit, because the benefits could be more than just the tipping fees saved and farming out some of our work that we're already doing now. It could help us out in our budget on the long run. Secondly, I'm all for beach nourishment, loss mitigation, whatever you want to call it. We need it better now, better to be ready, because as it's looking now, the town of Kitty Hawk is looking to get some funding from either the state or the government because of the, you know, the peril of Route 12 falling. And I know Duck is proposing a two cent tax starting very, very soon. So the time may be right for us to be ready so we can piggyback on and get a better rate and save everybody a little bit more money. The third thing was the wastewater treatment plant. And I've spoken before on it, and I just want to restate that I am against anything that is going to lead the town down the path to owning this and my tax dollars possibly being used to support and fund and run that when citizens like myself don't even have the opportunity to hook up to it. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Anyone else this evening that would like to speak at this public comment?
Skip Jones, live at 1508 Captain's Lane. And I'm just in support of the kids here. I think it's, I've been in support of this in a couple committees and stuff already. But I think also from a safety and liability issue, I think it's pretty critical that we get some type of sidewalks, at least on one side, and hopefully on both sides. But one would be better than nothing. You know, we've got a lot of bicycles going down the bypass at night. It's really, it's really a scary situation, really. And I think that's happening more and more. And I think possibly some of the European kids who come over are used to riding their bikes on just about any road. That might be part of it, I don't know. But I think it's a pretty critical issue that we need to look at, and from aesthetic value as well.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Skip.
Anyone else who wishes to speak this evening at this public comment session? Okay. Well, we'll close public comment and move on to response to public comment. First, we had Jessie Reynolds. Thank you so much for being here. It really is a pleasure to have the students come present to us and to hear from your perspective and your voice, and especially that you've worked with other students and gained that many signatures on the petition shows a lot of work. And obviously, too, the way you're able to cite different pages of our approved adopted plan, you put some time into reading that, and that's impressive as well. It's not necessarily the most exciting document, but it sounds like you went through it pretty astutely, so. There's several things that are starting to happen. And you may have, in speaking with Greg, found out a little bit about that. There is a meeting this coming Friday in Kitty Hawk that NCDOT is going to be there. We're talking a lot about just the bypass road at that meeting. But certainly, whenever you have a discussion nowadays with the bypass, you know, pedestrian pathways along that is part of the conversation. As Skip mentioned, the recently formed Community Apairance Committee is also discussing this as an item and has identified it as a priority. Recently, the planning board put forward a recommendation about funding, starting to basically set up funding to build a pot of money to start being able to basically pay for things that are identified in that plan. But when students like yourself and others continue to come in front of us and stress how important it is, it helps when we're trying to make these tough decisions of what to fund and not to fund. I really do appreciate that. And if anyone else has any comments?
I'd say absolutely. I completely agree with everything she said. Again, it definitely strengthens our position to have folks like you come before us.
Yeah, I'm really impressed at the number of signatures you got. That's a lot of people don't, you know, don't want to pay attention to things like that. And I know it's a subject that's been kicked around for many years. And I think it's something that we should deal with. Thank you very much.
And Mike, thank you for your comments. I believe at the last meeting after the students spoke about recycling, Beverly and her staff are going to start looking into the numbers that they presented. So I would imagine, I'm not sure, put Beverly on the spot, but at an upcoming meeting, I imagine we'll get some information, some details on that to follow up. But it was something that we expressed an interest in looking into, based on the students' presentation. And thank you for your input on the other two items. And Skip, thank you for speaking. Okay. With that, we'll move on to old business, item number one, the proposed public-private partnership for the purchase of the KDH wastewater treatment plant LLC. Debbie, I don't know if you want to do an introduction on this?
I'll be happy to.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. I guess a couple of years ago now, Jim, a couple of years ago, the town started meeting with Aqua America concerning a public-private partnership between them and the town for wastewater treatment. Currently, as most know, the town has what was formerly known as the Ocean Acres system that's hooked on to the Kill Devil Hills wastewater treatment plant, which you may be more familiar with it as the Beach Club system, the original Beach Club system. And this was where Aqua America would purchase the wastewater plant from the current owners and then would provide the town the service with the town maintaining the collection system. And the proposal that they presented for you this evening, or presented for you a few months ago, that you're discussing this evening, would allow for them to own the plant, the town owned the collection system, which, just a little history on that, the town needs to maintain our portion of the Ocean Acres collection system because of some grant funds that were used a number of years ago. And I think where the board is this evening was they wanted to have some discussion as to whether or not we should continue to pursue this in more detail.
And with that, I'll open the floor for discussion from the board and also recognize that Mr. Jim Powers is here this evening. So if anyone does have any questions, I know we've had quite a bit of time with the proposal, but certainly Jim is here if we need to ask him any questions. Thank you for being here, Jim. With that, I'll open the floor for discussion.
You want me to start?
If you'd like to.
All right. I've spent some time with us. I was on the committee, the Citizens Committee, that worked with Aqua and the commissioners earlier when the initial proposals were being developed. And had somewhat of a hand in some of the constraints that were laid on that proposal. One of probably the most important one being that the proposal could not envision any growth in service as a, as a part of the value, so to speak, of the system. And I think that the proposal as presented basically does that, that it is on the basis of fixed capacity, although I think Aqua certainly hopes that the, that the capacity is expanded. But the proposal that the commissioners is looking at, commissioners are looking at, is one of fixed capacity. I had heard, I was not a commissioner, but I had heard that from several commissioners that they felt that this was a good idea because it would give the town greater control of its commercial future, although I never heard that publicly discussed. And I don't think it actually ever was publicly discussed, certainly not in this commission and not in the committee that I was on. And so I took the liberty of going and talking to a few of those commissioners, former commissioners. And they indeed did believe that, we do believe that, from two different vantage points. The first being that if the town owns the collection system, then in the event of a severe event, a storm event, a catastrophe of some sort, the town would be in a position to be much more responsive over the long run than, and this isn't to play down the capability of the contractor, but we don't really know who the contractor might be or would be the owner of the facility at the time something like that would happen. And whether they would have the resources available to them to respond expeditiously and adequately so that we could get our tourism infrastructure and business infrastructure back up and battery very, very rapidly. And of course, now we also have residential infrastructure, Ocean Acres, and we're starting to begin to take on several of the large residential establishments along the Beach Road, as I understand it. And so his position was this would put us in a much better position to respond to situations like that. The other, another commissioner indicated that he was for it because he thought that we could much better govern and control the expansion if the town controlled the collection system than we, than we can right now where the contractor or the owner, the private owner, governs that. And what he said also made sense. Yes, right now, the owner basically sells to who first come, first served, as I understand it. And perhaps he does have some rules that he uses. But my understanding is it's, there is no fundamental growth policy or anything like that that governs to whom capacity is sold or not sold. It occurred to me in listening to that, that if the town were to try to exercise control over that, we have to do that in the same way we do zoning, that is, we have to codify it, and we have to apply it equally to all applicants, unlike a private owner, although I guess a regulated private owner has to do the same thing. But we can do the same thing whether we own the system or not, I believe. I'd have to sit down and discuss that with the attorney. I'm not sure if we're able to impose conditions ex post facto. But we certainly could form a larger sanitary district and impose control and rationalize the disposal of additional capacity. But I thought that both commissioners had a valid point. Yes, it would give us somewhat larger control, a greater control. Whether or not there's any pressing need for that, I would have to, you know, you'd have to assess that for yourself. I'm not sure there is, but certainly there, if we owned the collection system, we would have greater control than we do right now. But in turning, taking now and going and looking at the proposal itself, I see the biggest single problem is that we are basically offered a contract, long-term contract, that is for two things. One is a long-term operating contract at a relatively, as well-established schedule of rates, subject to adjustment, depending on costs and so forth. But it's, it's clear, it's a business-like proposition. And we have, we have established a contract price at which the town would buy the system at various points. But the most fundamental thing to my way of looking at that is that the current value of that price that's established in the contract is $5 million. And the system may be worth $5 million and it may not be, but we have a appraisal that we've paid for. How much did we pay for it, Debbie? You don't care to discuss that, dang, okay? But it says it's worth $3 million. And I think Aqua could put together a very good pitch about why that's not correct and it's worth quite a bit more. And the people we paid to give us the assessment could put together a very good pitch about why it's worth exactly 2.8 to 3.2 million dollars. But our problem would not be whether it's 3.2 or 3 or 2.8 or 5. Our problem is, is that the local government commission is going to require us to follow the state statute. And they're going to want to know, why are we buying or why are we agreeing to pay a $5 million appropriately adjusted for depreciation over the years? Or a property that has been evaluated by your own assessors at 3 million? I think that's more than, I mean, I know a lot of work has been done. I know a lot of improvements have been made. But I don't think we can climb from 3 to 5 and get by the local government commission. And since if we want to do some other things where we need to borrow money, the government, the local government's commission's opinion of us is going to be rather important. You know, we, they're the ones who decide whether we can float bonds and borrow money. Our credit is very good, but without their okay, it's not particularly valuable. So I see a very large difference in the assessment of value for the system. And I think it's difficult to overcome, and so difficult that I don't think it is warranted, it warrants further expenditure, because if we're going to do this, we've got to do another appraisal. We've got to, certainly that our town attorney will tell us that investigating a, how many million total is it? It's a 5 million purchase price and a 30-year, what's the annual revenue? I mean, this is a complicated, difficult contract that's going to require quite a bit of legal analysis and quite a bit of modification, probably, because I think most attorneys will point out that we're wide open for this and that and so forth. And it's way above my pay grade to figure that out. Attorneys get paid to do it, but I'm sure that it's not included in the retainer. And so, you know, we probably would expend something on the order of between $100 and $200,000, getting ourselves to the point where we were smart enough to accept or reject this document. My point is, I think that we're so far apart on price that it's, we shouldn't invest that kind of money to try to make this a go. So I'm reluctantly, I have to say, because I really have spent a lot of time on this over the years, and I would kind of hope that it would go, but I don't, I don't think it can. I will have to vote today if we vote on it negative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would also have to vote no for, and I agree with Bill on what he said about the purchase price especially, but also there's a lot of other things in the contract. And as he said, it would take a lot of expense on our part to have it examined and to have the appraisal done. And there's, there's a lot to this. And I spent a whole lot of time on it, and I made a lot of notes with a red pen and a highlighter. And I don't see the point in going through all that because there's, I, there's no, I can't see any way I can find my way around voting for this. So I'm going to be against it if it comes to the vote tonight also.
I'll have to agree with everything Bill said as well. And Mike, I've spent some time with this as well. And there are additional concerns in addition to that when you have a public-private partnership. Some of the, some of the things and the constraints that you have with that, with the Utilities Commission are negated. And some of the, some of the things that protect the consumer are not there. And while I don't think that immediately that would be a concern, I think it's, it's very concerning to the folks that are living there. And that's what I'm hearing at any rate. So I think, I think that's something we have to look at very carefully. When you look at rate increases and the ability to increase exponentially, that's something that, that I don't know that if it came to us and we had to be able to make that call, if we're going to do that or if we're going to impose that on the taxpayer, where that's going to be. So again, my vote, my vote today would also be no.
Just a few comments I had, but bottom line is, I think there's consensus, it sounds like, that this isn't the right thing for KDH right now. Bill, I appreciate the work that you did in speaking with some of the former commissioners and getting that background, because I remember hearing that a couple of times about one of the benefits, because that's one of the things I was really trying to weigh when I was reading through this and sifting through the information, is not that we're in any position to just go purchase this outright or that there would be any interest of the board, but I was really trying to weigh in my mind, what's the benefit of the public-private partnership versus us just saying, okay, we're going to purchase from the seller and not having that partnership and not having, you know, that kind of intermediary. And for the background from the previous commissioners, I think those are very valid points, but those could be, the concerns could be mitigated if, through an outright ownership as well. Like I said, not that I'm advocating that either, I'm just saying that they are valid concerns, and I think there's appropriate ways to address those. And Brandy, to kind of did a little bit in your part, one thing that I will commend Aqua for doing in this proposal, it is very, very complicated overall, as far as all the moving parts to this. But I think the proposal was very well-written in explaining that and also spelling out where the impact is for the citizens that, that basically are subscribing to the service or have the service. And in fairness, they did try as much as possible to protect the rates and not keep them going up. At least it was very apparent in the first year, some people would actually pay less. However, the model is built on a 9% annual increase, and that's where, at least for the first five years, and then it tapers. But as you are indicating right now, when it's privately owned, you have to go through the Utilities Commission to request that increase. And the current owner may do that in the near future and certainly has every prerogative, but I don't know that they would have success going every year and requesting that increase. I just don't know. But anyway, while I appreciate the due diligence from a lot of people that were involved in this much longer than I have been, and certainly Jim and his team and the staff that have worked on this, I appreciate everyone's diligence in this. But I know, I just don't believe it's, it's the right thing for the town right now to get involved in. So with that, I know several of you mentioned if it was called for a vote. I think we probably do need to, there's some type of finality. I know the discussion was left up, do we move forward and delve into this further or not? I think at this juncture, a motion would be appropriate, basically that we would not move forward if that's the consensus. So is it?
I move that we take no action on this proposal and not move forward on it.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you. Next, under old business, is item number two, beach nourishment. For those of you who were at our last meeting, we decided to place this item on tonight's agenda, and Commissioner Pitt offered to do a kind of an overview presentation, which he will spend some time doing for us now. It's kind of our first segment into our discussion on beach nourishment. It's kind of our first segment into our discussion on beach nourishment.
Since I'm well-known to my propensity to speak forever whenever I have the opportunity, this is on asking to cut me off in 20 minutes. I don't think we need to listen to this stuff for any more than that.
We'll call on Dana to do that. He's offered before if things get out of control, so we'll take him up on it.
Thank you.
What I thought we would do is talk a little bit about why we're talking about this tonight, go back and do a little bit about the history of it, perhaps talk a little bit about the urgency as to whether there really is urgency or not, and then somewhat about the cost before we try to decide whether we should move forward or not. So what we really would like to do, and let's see, okay, that didn't, that worked. You know, do you have a hard copy of this because I don't have one and I can't see that?
Yeah, I don't.
Okay.
You want to come over here, you want to come over here and do it at this?
I'll do it from my chair. Is that all right with everybody here? Will you be upset if I do that? Okay, good.
If you, if you want to do it from, from this, this computer, you can do it from here too, as well you can see.
Well, I'll just get, I'll just get my chair. And then you can't see me physically and film.
Does this go towards your time? Don't restart your time though.
No, you don't, you needn't do that.
You've got 18 left.
Okay, this is what we can do in response to erosion, okay? Now, we're talking about physically, hard stabilization, seawalls, jetties, groynes, et cetera. If any of you have ever been up on the Long Island coast, some of the areas around New York Harbor, some of the, some of the Jersey coast areas, you've seen the seawalls and jetties. The common term for all of that is armoring. Most of us know that when you armor a seawall, what it basically does is it, it tends to destroy the bathing beach. You still have a beach, but it's water up to whatever the armor is, the jetty, the seawall, what have you. It takes away the sandy beach that we all remember as a child. Soft or sand stabilization, and that's what we tend to do. Sandbags, beach pushing, bulldozing, we've all seen that. Beach nourishment, which we've all now seen at Nag's Head. And that's one of the reasons why we're talking tonight. Nag's Head took the, took the bit and just went at it and put together, I don't know how much they spent, 20 million?
I think it was more like 36.
36, 36 million and replenished 12 miles, 10 miles of their waterfront, about half of it with about 50 cubic yards per foot and the rest of it at anywhere from 70 to 150 cubic yards per linear foot. That's a lot of sand, incidentally, if you think about it. Do you remember the berm that we built after the hurricane that came through here? We put that big sand berm up on the north end of the beach. It looked like a big dune. We had some, we had some jockeys driving their four-by-fours up and down the top of it for a little while. Anyway, that was 10 cubic yards per linear foot, to give you some idea, so. A minimal, a minimal beach nourishment is five times that much sand spread. A real beach nourishment is, is 15 times that per linear foot. If you, you want to get a feel for scale about what we're talking about here tonight. Relocation, we're doing that and retreat, and we're doing that. And we've been doing that for many, many years. Now, the hard stabilization is illegal in North Carolina. The law does not permit groynes, jetties, or seawalls for the simple reason that it denies sand or it takes, it may build sand at the area where it's built, but it denies sand downdrift. In our case, drift is north to south. So if we built, if we armored, for example, North Kill Devil Hills, we would very rapidly begin to see in South Kill Devil Hills a diminishment of their beach as opposed to the stability that we now have or the occasional accretion. What happens when you do nothing? What happens when you retreat and relocate? Well, from a town's point of view, your real estate values begin to fall. And what you see here is, this is from the latest appraisal, the reappraisal that was just finished. And the north end, as you can see, is about, oh, about $80 million behind the south end, the south end being stable. There's about 200 parcels in the south end, there's about 300 parcels in the north end. And the reason for the fewer parcels in the south end is because it's a stable beach. People consolidate parcels, they build large properties, big hotels and so forth. And so the difference in development is that basically $75 million that you see there. And that has been that way for as long as I've been around here, that relative lack of development or difference in development between the north and the south end. It is not getting appreciably worse, it is not getting appreciably better. That's been about the way it's been for quite a few years. Now, if you go down to, yeah, we're jumping here. If you go down to Kitty Hawk, that's not quite so. Their beach values got quite low and then because their beach got so narrow. And not only did their beach values get quite low, their, their total of the rents that they get, occupancy rents that they got really fell. And to give you some, a feel for that, in 2003, total occupancy in the whole town of Kitty Hawk was about $10 million per year as opposed to roughly 25 in Kill Devil Hills. And the total for the county at that time was about 250 million. Occupancy consists of about one-third of our total tourist revenue. In other words, if we collect 250 million in occupancy, tourism as a whole roughly is a $75 million, 75, $750 million, see, I'm having trouble here, $750 million business in Dare County, which it was at that time. And now, right now, last year occupancy was about 390 million. Kitty Hawk, which had been declining at about a rate in 2003 at about 2% per year, now yields 25 million, okay? Or more than twice what they yielded then. And why? The Hilton Garden Inn, that property, that $20 million property, single-handedly revived the industry in that town. And so, but, but the rest of the town, they're quite alarmed, as you know. Not so much, I don't think, from what's happening to the beach as to what's happening as a result of losing their primary dune system and the overwash, the flooding, and they are not so fortunate to have the outfalls that we have. Their drainage is quite a bit poorer. And so their sense of, of we've got to do something now, I think is as much driven by the tendency for flood damage there as it is for the narrowing beach. But their beach is getting quite narrow. Did you read the piece in The Voice the other day talking about how people don't want to go to the bathing beach in Kitty Hawk anymore? They, they go to the bathing beaches and others. And that's because it's so narrow and narrow beaches are unpleasant, as you know, if you've tried to use them. Well, let's move on. Here's what North Carolina allows. And here's the conditions for which you, you need to satisfy if you want to do a beach nourishment project. Here is some of the background, but let me take you back even a little bit further than this. The beach as we know it started in about 1930 when the CCC and the WPA started building sand fences along the beach and established the dune system that we have. Now, the dune system we have today is not theirs, but the first dune system was theirs that they built. And the reason for building that system was to try to lay a road down, the beach road, down the waterfront that would actually stay there over the winter. Up until then, we couldn't keep a beach road in place. The school buses, for example, when they drove from Rosicron's, which is what this area used to be known as, when the school bus wanted to take the kids from the seven families in Rosicron's up to the school in Kitty Hawk, they drove the school bus all the way out to sand track to the beach and then up the beach and then up Kitty Hawk Road from the beach to the school. And if the surf was up and the bus couldn't make the beach, up the beach, then they came back and they used what was known as Moore Shore Road, which how many of you remember what the sand track looked like from Sportsman to, what's the name of the street it was? But it was just a track in the sand. That's what Moore Shore Road was. It was basically an ox cart track. You could get a vehicle up and down it if you knew what you were doing. And incidentally, the kids driving these buses were 13 and 14-year-olds. You know, how did they do it? But they did. But the beaches then started to build. When they got that dune system up, they were finally able to lay a McAdam Road, the beach road. When the beach road was laid down, it was 1,000 feet from the ocean. And the lots were 50-foot lots, 1,000 feet deep, one acre each, makes sense, right? You can see the speculators clicking and clicking. But that's the way the whole waterfront was laid out from basically Kitty Hawk, from where the Hilton is right now, all the way down to, through to Nag's Head, the, they had built, they were building the, the, what do you call it? The road from Mattio to the, so the Causeway. Now, that beach, once you get that dune up, you interfere with the natural flow of water and sand. Before we had the natural dunes, the water regularly washed over this entire beach. This was a free range, an open range, mostly feral hogs, some feral cattle, lots of birds and chickens. There wasn't a thing living anywhere except in the maritime forests, in Nag's Head Forest and Kitty Hawk Forest. Every green thing that stuck through the sand was immediately eaten by the feral animals. So when they built the sand fences, they issued edicts that all feral animals will be penned and cleared. But the reason we all have these slats under our cottages is to keep the hogs, the feral hogs, from going under the cottage and pooping there because that's what they like to do, get under there, it's shady. And then they would poop and then all our cottages would stink. But, and today we still put up the slats and I even moved into a neighborhood where it was required that you had slats, even though there were no hogs. But at any rate, we started running into trouble in the 50s on beach nourishment. In 1955, we had Hurricane Hazel. And then in 50, that was 54, I'm sorry, 55, we had three hurricanes. These were all passages, incidentally, and they didn't hit us, they passed. And that's the most destructive kind of hurricane for us, if you'll recall. The hurricane that passes off the coast does the most damage to us. Hazel in 54, Connie, Diane, and Ione in 55. Three. And then that winter, two protracted nor'easters. And we really took a lot of damage. It wasn't as bad as Ash Wednesday, which came a few years later. But the young fellow who decided to do something about that was appointed and put in charge was David Stick. And so he wrote, I think they called it the sand manual or the, it told you what to do to preserve your property. But he also tried to organize the very first beach nourishment project. And in a very short discussion of three hours that I had with him, and three hours was a very short discussion with David Stick, if you've ever had a discussion with David, plan on spending the day. He's not alive anymore, of course, but he was a wonderful guy. He told me that that effort, which he worked at for six or seven, eight years, it failed because he could not get the beachfront property owners to grant easements to put the sand on their beaches. That was the source of failure and then they, they gave up on it in the early 60s, about 1963. I believe he was chairman of the county board at that time. I'm not sure when he was chair. Does anybody, do you remember, anybody remember when he was chair? I don't remember, but he, he was, I think he was chair at that time. Anyway, that, that, that was the first effort, organized effort. It was going to be a local project as opposed to a federal project. The current, the project that, that we started on in the, in the 90s was a very formal, very large scale. It was going to be, let's see, 10 miles in Nag's Head, two miles here, a mile in Kitty Hawk. So it was roughly 13, 14 miles in total. It was a full replenishment plus the first re-nourishment, 170 cubic yards per linear foot average over the whole project. So it was at the top end of the scale. And I think the price at the time was 70 million for the initial and the lifetime cycle cost was 500 million. That was authorized in the sense that the Congress authorized the project, but it was never appropriated. And so that basically failed at that point. Then the county tried several steps to nourish it on their own. And how many of you remember the big sales tax? The legislature authorized us to charge an extra one cent sales tax, which would have paid for that. And it was, it was authorized, it was implemented, and then we had a referendum and it was reversed. About that time is when Nag's Head decided to go off on their own. Now, the Nag's Head project, I think you said it was 36 million? It's 10 miles. It is 50 cubic feet per linear foot on the north end, the top five miles. And then it goes to 100 cubic feet per linear foot and then to 170 cubic feet or 150 cubic yards, I'm sorry, yards per cubic foot, cubic yards per foot. And then it tapers back down to 70 per foot at the south end. To date, that appears very, very successful. The basic structure of that is a special tax district, which is oceanfront, in their case, oceanfront owners. Actually, it also includes everybody east of Old Oregon Inlet Road, doesn't it?
I think Oceanside there.
Yeah, Oceanside as opposed to, it's everybody Oceanside as opposed to oceanfront. And what they basically did was doubled their, their real estate taxes each year for, I think, five years or six years. Plus, they increased the total tax rate in the town 10% for the same period of time. And using that, they are able to, and also, half of it is being paid from the county beach nourishment fund, which comes from the occupancy tax. And, and then they're paying, those special taxes pay for a quarter of it and then another quarter of it, because that becomes part of their levy, they accrue additional shared revenues from occupancy, sales, restaurant, all of the things that are part of the shared revenues in our system of shared revenue that we use here in this county. So that is how they're paying for it. If we decide that we're going to go with this, we will be looking at something quite similar. And I stopped neglecting to use my slides. Let me see if I can catch up to myself. How many minutes have I got left, Pat?
You're pretty close.
Am I pretty close? Okay. Here's what the financial template would look like. A project cost of 15 to 25 million, depending on whether we went with, say, 50 or 60 or 70 cubic yards per foot or 170 cubic yards per foot, the top end. Incidentally, the way that is laid out is there's a sort of a fixed cost, 4 million bucks, okay, that you got to pay just to get the dredge here and send it home. And then while he's here dredging sand, it's so much per yard. That's basically how you arrive at these costs. And because we have such a short project, it pays us, in a sense, to put more sand on the beach because we're going to pay $4 million to do one foot, okay? We're going to pay the same $4 million if we do two miles. That is a fixed cost. So what we're really talking about here is, is a variable cost of 11 to 21 million. So what we're really talking about here is a variable cost of 11 to 21 million. But you're talking about the amount of sand that goes down increases by a factor of three, while the cost increases by less than a factor of two. So that's the financial template. About half would come from the beach nourishment program. Let's say we take the 25 million. So twelve and a half million comes from the Dare County Beach Nourishment. Twelve and a half comes from a special obligation fund, which we, a special obligation bond in which we pledge the tax revenues from a special district and from the additional tax that we would levy in our, the 10% increase in our town tax. And then we would also gather, we would also pledge an additional 1% occupancy that the county would impose, but in reality, we probably could make that with the shared revenue increases. It depends on how many other folks are participating and doing the same sort of thing, because if everybody is raising their taxes at the same time, it spreads the shared revenue much thinner than it does if only one town. For example, we all know the effects of Nag's Head on shared revenue on us. So townwide, we're assuming that the town rate is going to be very shortly about 32 cents, which is the revenue neutral rate. So 3% additional, 3 cents additional would be roughly a 10% increase. And then we would have a municipal service district. The gals who were here talking about sidewalks, if we were to form up a tax district for the sidewalks, that would be a municipal service district. And it would be basically twice whatever the town rate is on their particular properties. Who would be in the municipal service district? That would be a long, difficult, arduous debate that would go on for weeks. And it probably would wind up everybody who's in flood zone V on the oceanfront. So that's everybody who is actually on the east side of the beach road and those properties on the west side of the beach road that are V, in flood zone V. And there are some, not many, but there are some. So that's basically probably what we've been looking at. That would be the financial template and that would be the financial burden that we would have to impose on our fellow citizens if we wanted to go ahead with this. Some definitions. Twenty minutes up?
If you have more to say, Bill.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Here's a timeline. This is very ambitious, I think, although I'm told others don't think necessarily so. But by this summer, we would have to be ready to adopt obligation bond resolutions. We would have to be working with the county commissioners to impose the additional 1% occupancy tax and pledge that as collateral. And we would have to implement it in January of 2014. And that's difficult to do because there's a lot of threading the needle that has to happen before you can impose a tax like that, because all of these people have catalogs that all have the old tax rates and so forth. You get the picture. Here are the taxes I was talking about. When, if, what would a 5% increase look like if we took one of the smaller projects? If we took the 15 million dollar, 50 cubic, or 70 cubic yard per linear foot, that would be more like a 15 million dollar project, okay? Might even be less than that, but that's probably about what it would be. We would probably still have to double the town ride rate for the oceanfront folks. It might be a smaller district. You have the easements. Of course, all of those easements are already surveyed. There are easement agreements that exist for almost all of them. So we don't have David's problem, we hope. We would still have holdouts. We would have to condemn, I'm sure. And then we would construct, and then we would have to also decide whether we're gonna do a local project or a Section 206. A Section 206 is where we go and get the promise of the government to reimburse us at some date in the future for our work, providing we follow their specifications, which are, of course, enormous. But I only know of one 206 project that has succeeded in the last decade. Do you know of any more?
Yes, sir.
None in North Carolina.
None in North Carolina. One in Florida, and they pushed it through on the, it was some...
Sandy money, I think.
Yeah, Sandy money, I guess it was. Hurricane Sandy. But it was down in Florida, not up in New York. Beats me. I expect that they probably invested somewhere around one or two million in lobbying. And we would have to do the same thing for 206, incidentally. We would, and you would have a chance to see downtown Washington quite a bit. I've already seen it often enough and they've asked me not to come back. And we would finish construction on this schedule in about 2015. So we're talking two and a half, two and a half years. That is a real fast track. Everything would have to go, everybody would have to agree, no major fights, and certainly no duels to the day. So the rest of this is what does a dredge look like? What does a hopper dredge look like? How does it work? I'll go through it very quickly. Slow me down if you want to see more detail. This is a hopper dredge. Shows how it works, suction, basically. These are, that's a cutter, whoop, I'm sorry, that's a cutter head, that's quite a piece of machinery. Getting that all assembled and getting all working again, everything is part of your four million dollars. This is some of the other gear that gets used, towing lines around and pumping and And this is Nag's Head at, roughly to the area right around Seagull. Do you know where that is? That's where those houses were really exposed. And what you see is you look out there, you see the 50 cubic yards per foot, you see the 100, and I think at this area, weren't they up to 170? Have we got an engineer here tonight? I think they were at the, in the 170 cubic yards per foot when they were doing this Some before and after pictures. These are mostly before. Looks familiar, doesn't it? We've seen pictures on our waterfront that look kind of like that, sometimes around the, some of our motels and so forth. And here we are with some after pictures. I don't know, how many of you have had a chance to take a look at the Nag's Head beach since it's been redone? A lot of us have only seen it from the pier, Jeanette's Pier. That's a very good vista as you look down. Jeanette's Pier is roughly at the point where they shift, I think, from 50 to 100 cubic yards per foot. So if you look north from Jeanette's Pier, you're looking at the narrower, smaller project. That's what a 70 cubic yard per foot project would look like if we did that. You look to the south and you're looking at one of the larger projects. That used to be regularly a huge lake there. And this is a portrait of what they're actually doing. And what it's trying to convey to you is where they put the sand. And what you basically see is they're pushing the beach out by, oh, roughly 400, 200 to 400 feet, pushing the water line out 200 to 400 feet. And of course, this varies sharply depending on the season, because in the winter, even a re-nourished beach gets steep, just like any winter beach, and then in the summer it gets, it gets shallow again, like a summer beach. And that still happens when your beach re-nourishes. It wears by each winter as it gets steep. The next spring, when it comes back and you start getting your summer beach, it doesn't all come back. That's called wearing. And that sand is heading on down to go into the inlet so we can dredge the inlet and keep everybody happy. So that's basically what the story is in terms of scale, size, how much it's gonna cost, how long it would take, how much effort. Do we need to do it right away? Well, these things take quite a long time to happen. For example, when I was in my twenties, and I once was, believe it or not, as a young midshipman, I would come down here with my dad, Studebaker, and try to impress young ladies. And we would drive by the Kitty Hawk Life Saving Station, which is now called Black Pelican, only it was on the other side of the road. And then on the other side of the Coast Guard Station was a softball field where you played softball. And then on the other side of the softball field was a boathouse, and then there was the ocean. Okay? Now, how many of you have been up there and looked at over the top of the dune at Black Pelican lately? Used to be Coast Guard Station, softball field. Any of you ever remember Winky Silver?
Yeah.
Winky used to walk up the white line on that McAdam Road to play softball on that softball field. And so did everybody else from the south end of Kill Devil Hills and the north end of Nag's Head. They would walk up the white line, as you know what it feels like to walk on the burning sand on a hot day. But that's, that was in the 50s, guys. And my dad, Studebaker, was a 50 commander with a V8 and an automatic. It was a monster in those days. And somebody asked me, well, was it Glenda you were trying to impress? And I said, no, she was not impressed by Yankee college boys. But at any rate, it's now 60 years that's gone by. The Black Pelican has been where it is now since, well, it was Station Six, right? And let's see, my father died in 88, which was about the time that Black, Station Six was operating, because we held the wake and everything there. So it's been sort of like that since 88. So that was 30 years it took to get roughly to that point, gives you a feel. Now, that highway is an excellent armored jetty, right? I mean, that's what 12 is right now. How much longer we'll keep it, I don't know, but that's, that's what's happening right now. Will we see the same thing in Kill Devil Hills? Yes, but not 10 years from now, not 20 years from now. It might be two generations before we see that. This is a relatively slow process, which says that we have time to consider this and discuss it. But keep in mind that costs accelerate at 3% to 4% per year for this kind of work, which means that 3% to 4% per year is doubling every, what, 20, 22 years, right? Cost doubles every 22 years. What we can do for 15 years now, your kids sitting here on the board can do for, I'm your 30 million. And your grandchildren for 60 million. So, I mean, that's the way it goes. If you want to do it, no better time than now, but you don't have to decide right now. The world isn't going to come to an end if we don't decide this board or this evening or this week or this year. That's sort of my pitch. Sorry if I took too much time. I apologize.
Thank you.
I don't think it was too much time. It was interesting, too. Your wisdom is very much appreciated.
That's right. That's why we asked and wanted you to sit with us.
Absolutely.
So here's the essential fact sheet.
Now, one of the things I think is so important about talking, starting this conversation now and continuing this conversation is the fact that we're hearing other towns, other neighboring towns, whether it's Kitty Hawk and Duck, looking to get involved. You know, you talk about that fixed cost of four million dollars just to mobilize the equipment to begin the process. It's a great time to be looking at cost sharing involved in that, if, you know, they're...
That's correct.
Mobilizing and then moving right over to start the next one or coming to us after they start that, so it's very timely. And I know, I think, is it next week that we're meeting?
We don't actually have a new date yet. But that's what we're shooting for, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Debbie's been working with the town manager and mayors of Duck and Kitty Hawk and also the county manager and Warren about all of us getting together to start having a discussion as well, just to kind of hear what, where the other towns are and the county is with Thank you very much for that presentation and for all of this information. I'm glad, too, that with our meetings being televised, others can, that weren't here tonight will be able to access this information. We have a public forum scheduled. In fact, our next meeting is a public forum, which is the April 24th meeting. And I know when we advertised that, we had discussed trying to have a focus at that forum of beach nourishment. Certainly, we can talk about other things at the public forum, but it would be an opportunity where we really could have our first kind of sit down with the citizens and whomever that attends that public forum to start hearing from our citizens. Just like Mike shared tonight, you know, he's in favor, certainly we recognize, not everyone will be, but it would be nice to start that dialogue. So we really do want to encourage people to come to the 24th and start that. I will ask, kind of, as far as tonight, what type of discussion you all as a board want to get into, or do you want to digest this information here on the 24th and then schedule it for the meeting after the 24th to have our next discussion? What's your pleasure?
I think we should discuss it at the forum. We don't have to take up a whole meeting for it. We can set a time limit. We can, you know, we can talk about beach nourishment for, what, half an hour or something, because it's going to be something that, nothing of this magnitude has ever been done here, even if you compare the time 50 years ago to now, there's nothing like this. So it's going to be very important. And additionally, I think, I think it's important for us to get, to be ambitious with the timeline and try to get it going so that we can be in place if one of the other towns would get ahead of us or something like that in their process and then we weren't able to catch up and we would miss out on that sharing. I wouldn't like to see that happen. Of course, they may decide not to do anything, we may be going alone, but in either case, I think that the danger of waiting much longer is too great. I don't know if it's just anecdotal information or whether, how exactly true it is, but they talked about that the areas up where Sandy hit in New Jersey and Long Island and places like that, the places that have been nourished got minimal damage and the places that weren't were just, you know, as you saw in the news, they were just wiped out. Now, that's probably a bit of exaggeration, but I'm sure the places that have been nourished probably fared a little better than the ones that hadn't. Anything could happen here.
Yeah, that has generally been the history wherever beach nourishment has been done, Gulf Coast, Florida Coast, either side, both sides, particularly on barrier islands where they have been re-nourished, the damage has been relatively minimal. Where they have not been, it's been, is where the severe, like in Mississippi, for example, on those barrier islands that were not nourished, it was a clean sweep. And they, and that, and sometimes when I say, well, there's always the Mississippi solution, which in our case, the Mississippi solution is we build a gigantic new dune down Memorial Drive and build high-rise condos on the bypass. And we declare everything east of the bypass beach. And that's, I mean, that's an extreme, but it does give you back your carrying capacity in your tourist industry, which most of us would, I mean, some of us are willing to double our taxes on a permanent basis, but most of us would like to keep on living the way we are, I think, than we'd like to do without three and five story condos on the bypass. Our way of life as we have it would probably be best preserved by one of these projects, whether it's small scale or large scale. Without it, we will, at some point in time, probably meet with a disaster of some sort, yes.
I would just, I'd like to add one more thing, a point that you made, I actually wrote it down, so I wouldn't forget, and then I forgot. That if, when the nourishment is done on the north end, and you talked about the, you know, the smaller properties and such and the amount of revenue and everything, that would be an incentive for a developer to build something up there.
That's correct.
And we could take, you could take three or four cottages along there hypothetically and turn it into quite a revenue generator.
That's correct.
Because they would feel safer in developing it if it's, if it's going to be there.
That's right.
So we might get all that money back pretty quick. Not pretty quick.
Probably not pretty quick, but you would get it back. But I'm not so sure it would be quick. I think the rate of return would be relatively low, maybe 3% or 4% per year.
Better than none.
It's better than none and it's better than a negative rate of return, which we have had, some communities here that have, for various periods of time, had negative rates of return.
Mike, I don't know, you and I had a conversation earlier...
Mike, I don't, you and I had a conversation earlier today, and I don't know if I actually shared with you, that we, we have had ongoing conversations with coastal planning and engineering about this topic, and, and so, and I don't know if you were privy to all of that information or not.
No.
Then, then you're a genius, because I, I don't know how, your, your timeline is actually almost right on. It was pretty close to what theirs was, right?
Wait a minute, I didn't prepare this pitch all by myself.
Okay, well, yeah. But at any rate, you, you are almost spot on, so yeah, okay, then you're, you're still a genius.
I have some able-bodied staff.
Okay, well, the able-bodied staff utilized the, the same planning line that, that coastal engineering had planned, so at any rate, I was just sitting there in amazement going, "Wow, he's not been in any of those meetings that I've been in, and all those things are right what they were telling us." So at any rate, I, I think really what, what coastal's waiting for is just our, our go-ahead for the most part. Is that not correct, Greg?
That's, that's it. They, they would like to know if, if the board wants to proceed, and then how they would like to proceed.
Absolutely.
They're ready.
And, and we've, we've done the study, so we can pursue the, the federal funding option. I, I think we've all agreed, sitting around the table, that's probably not the most prudent option, but it, it's there. We've, we've done the, the study and put the money into it to where that, that is an option, but that's probably not the wisest way to go. It would by far take longer and maybe not be the happiest outcome, because it depends on what, how optimistic you are. I'm an optimist for the most part, but I, I don't like playing those odds. So at any rate, I think especially considering the timelines and, and whatnot, and looking at those timelines, it's probably more prudent if we were to do that, to do it that way.
I have a very sound and solid record of defeat on this issue. And I worked for 10 years as a, eight years actually, as a commissioner, trying to, and I did all this number crunching for the county, the county board at the time, and we had our tail handed to us. I am for simplicity and manageable scale. In order to get this done, you've got to be able to basically pick up the ball and run with the folks who are right here. You can get support, don't get me wrong, but it takes so long to get it organized and get it supplied and keep it fed and keep everybody happy, and by the time you turn around, you know, three companies have disappeared into the brush. So I'm, I'm for doing it, but doing it on a scale that we can manage and, and at a cost that we, as a town, can, and we're fortunate that we're the largest municipality on the town, we're the largest tax base, the largest tourism base. You know, our, our tourism revenue per mile is higher than any other part of the county, with a possible exception of Duck. Duck is, except Duck is 10 miles, you know, so, so when you do it on a per-mile basis, it's, is, and Nag's Head is higher, too, but they're, they're 12 miles. But on a per-mile basis, we, we, we're lucky. I mean, we, we have a solid, solid tourism industry base, and we have a solid tax base. And we can do this if we don't try to bite off too much, make it too complex.
One thing I would like to say, especially for those people who are watching this and that have spoken with me that are sucking air at this point, because I've not said this, I, I do want to make sure that, and, and what I've said, and, and I know Sheila and I have talked about this from day one, I, I am concerned still, I mean, in looking at these numbers and, and making sure that, that the folks are, are able to, to pay for this in, in this economic time without undue hardship. So, you know, when, when we look at this, I still want to make sure that we can come out with some numbers where you're not paying an additional $500 a month for this. It's not, it's not fair at this point in the economy to come out and say that, you know, just, just for this sake, that this is what we want to do. So I, you know, I, simplicity is, is, is the name of the game, and I want to be able to say that, and I think Beverly's going to do this later with, with, with something very similar, where we can simplify this to, for you, to say that this is how this is going to be. So I, I hope we can do this for y'all with this as well, and, and that's all I'm going to say about that, because we're going to beat this a lot.
I think what I'd like to suggest, then, is that at this point, we host our public forum on the 24th, encourage the discussion with our citizenry, and then put this on our, would May 13th be the first meeting in May?
Yes, ma'am.
Put this back on the agenda for May 13th, and at that point, really have a discussion of where we're headed.
You want, what kind of prep do you want for our next, next meeting? Any?
For the April 24th meeting?
Right, you don't want this, this is too long.
Right.
We could do a very simplified three or four sheet.
Be nice to have a handout, so people can walk away with something as well.
Can we do that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Perfect, that'd be great.
We'll do that.
Okay.
And it'll be just three or four sheets, and that's all.
Okay. Well, thank you, though, so much for the information you shared tonight.
Yeah, thanks, Bill. Thanks for everybody sitting here and listening, because it's, you know, it, it's not boring to me, and I hope it's not boring to you, and it's something that's going to be extremely important to all of us. As I said, it's something of this magnitude we need to pay attention to.
Great. Okay. All right, well, if we're comfortable, we'll move on to new business. Okay. Item number one, under new business, we have three public hearings to consider scheduling. Under item number 1A is proposed zoning amendment, section 153.078, access to US 158 slash Croatan Highway and NC 12 slash Virginia Deer Trail, clarified language restricting driveway access to US 158 and NC 12. And Greg, may I call on you for an introduction?
Absolutely. This is a staff-generated request, and it, it's just simply to clarify that if you're looking for an access on 158, that, and you have a side street, then that's where you access it, is from the side street. And then, that the board would look at those cases where you did not have an access on a side street on a case-by-case basis. And this hopes to clarify and codify that language, and it's proposed as amendment 153.078. And the planning board on March 19th recommended approval of this amendment, and I guess if you, if you feel favorable, we can set the public hearing for May 13th.
Great. Any questions or discussion, questions for Greg or discussion from the board?
Why, why is this necessary?
Well, there was, there was, in the past, we had a, a project that questioned the interpretation of this, this particular section, and the intent was to say, as I described it, and it was interpreted differently, so that's why.
Ah, okay. So this is, this is customer relations.
I, I think it just clarifies.
Clarifies, yeah. Okay, I understand. That makes sense, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or discussion? If not, a motion would be in order to schedule this public hearing for May 13th, 2013, at 5:30 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item 1B is proposed zoning amendment to section 153.073F2A, landscaping requirements and composite materials as an option for perimeter screening between incompatible uses. And Greg?
Ma'am, again, another staff-generated request, and some more housekeeping. At, at one of our meetings, I think it was a planning board meeting, that the question was raised about fence materials, and our fence material, in this section, did not address some of the new types of materials that people are using to put up fences, and we felt it was sound to go ahead and include composite materials. Some of the new sound buffering fences, for example, might have three or four different types of materials in them, and, and just to make it clear that you can use some new technology, we thought that this language would be appropriate. So that, again, was reviewed by the planning board on March 19th, and suggests setting a, they said they forward it with recommendation, recommendation of approval, and suggest setting a public hearing for the May 13th meeting.
Okay, thank you. Board discussion or questions? Anyone like to make a motion?
So moved.
I'll second it.
And that motion being that we're setting the public hearing for May 13th at 5:30 PM?
Yes.
Got it.
What she said.
Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. Okay, and last, under item number one is 1C, requested zoning amendment to section 153.002 definitions, section 153.076 parking, section 153.082 exceptions, and section 153.177 commercial zone conditional uses, to add outdoor waiting activity area as a conditional use in the commercial zone, and to add definition, parking requirements, and setback exceptions for the use. And one more time, Greg, thank you.
Could I have 20 minutes to explain this one?
No, 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 no.
Well, actually, Ben Kahoon here is, Ben Kahoon is here tonight, who submitted this application on behalf of Kevin Cherry. And what it does is it tries to create a, it attempts to create an outdoor waiting activity area. I think the planning board and some other folks in the community have, have agreed that if people drive eight, 10 hours, and they get here and they want to be out of their car, and they, they enjoy being outside and maybe playing games or having some, some time to recreate and wait for their table inside outdoors. And while we have no requirement, no parking requirement for a pure waiting area, outdoor waiting area, it, it seemed appropriate to, when you start including activities in, with, with the waiting, and having people that may linger for a while before they get inside, or maybe they just come and listen to music and, and play a game and then leave, we, we felt that there needed to be some regulations. So Mr. Kahoon has crafted regulations, where the manager's memo makes a really good synopsis of it. And, and within that, those, that, that area, there wouldn't be any food service. You would, but you could have live, live entertainment and games and music. There's parking for this area would be established at 100 to 200 square feet for the activity area. And it also allows some stack parking, which I think is a pretty good idea. We may want to look at that in other areas, particularly for a restaurant, where the shifts generally change at the same time, and people know each other, and for, so they, it allows stack parking for employees. It, it kind of limits that, that outdoor activity area, so you can't go to the property line, but it doesn't push it all the way back to the setback line for buildings. So it allows it within 33% of the depth of the setback, you can have these activities. And with, and you have the noise, which is written in here, that limits the noise consistent with our noise ordinance, doesn't allow you to have service equipment outside. You can't have it covered. You can have an umbrella, but you can't have it covered, and it has to meet the lighting and the landscaping code and, and all the noise control and signage that I mentioned. Planning board thought it was a good idea, and, let me see, on April 2nd, the planning board reviewed this, and since there is a time-sensitive element to this, that Ben's client would like to move forward with it this season, if the board is inclined, it's possible that you can maybe hear this before our public forum, in terms of setting a public hearing for that night. But if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer it, and of course, Mr. Kahoon's here to discuss this with you, if you'd like.
Great, thank you. Open for questions and discussion?
Yeah, Greg, I have a question. What's the logic behind not allowing it to be covered?
I don't know, maybe that's a good question for Ben, but then you, you end up with a, it's not outdoors anymore if you cover it, I guess. It doesn't really mean the definition of outdoor, if you put a roof over it.
Well, I'm, I'm not talking about enclosed in any way on the sides, but if somebody's waiting to go in and eat, and they have to stand out in the rain, I don't understand that. And you probably couldn't have enough umbrellas to handle if you had a big waiting list.
Well, I understand.
And especially because, and I, I'd add that the improvements for this area are limited to raked earth, gravel, mulch, lawn, or other plantings. So then, the people would be standing in mud, or mulch, or wet grass, or...
Well, that, I think what you're talking about there is, is, is really the, what's into the front yard setback. But, but what, the reason, if you wanted to put a covered area in, there's really no problem with that. The parking would just adjust to it, to where you'd have the 1 to 100 square foot gross floor area under that roofed area.
Is there, could there be an exception for that, or, I mean, I don't know. But I, I know there's places that have covered waiting areas. I mean, are they in violation, or, I mean, I don't know.
If you have a covered waiting area, it's more than likely calculated into your gross floor area.
That's right.
I mean, it legally...
And it's also subject to the standard setback.
Right. The activity area, what this is addressing is simply people outside picnic tables, or like a, a stand area where you might, you might stay and have a drink, you might, there won't be any service, you might bring one out if you're, if you're inclined, but you will not have service out there, and you, and it's not made for people to, to stay out there all night in, in the rain or anything. It's, it's a seasonal outdoor waiting area with an activity.
Okay.
And Ben has approached the, welcome, Ben, thank you.
Sure.
The lectern, if anyone has any specific questions, or if you wanted to add anything.
No, I, I think as, as Greg pointed out, I mean, the, the narrow definition is really about a parking standard for this space. If someone wanted to do just a waiting area, they can roof that, and they can do that under the current ordinance. And there is no additional parking requirement, because the presumption there is that those folks are going to be diners in that restaurant. In this case, it's, it's to set a parking standard where folks are engaged in another activity and may linger and may just need more parking than's provided for dining.
So, and this, tonight's purpose is to schedule the public hearing, to give, so it's not to make decisions tonight other than doing that, so. And based on the, the applicant, and the timeliness of, of wanting to either know that they could operate within this or not, was why I had spoken with Greg and was personally supportive of holding the public hearing prior to starting the public forum, so we're not waiting all the way into mid-May before a decision could be taken. So that was, the other two were staff amendments that, that weren't as time-sensitive.
And if I may, I may or point out that even when you have the public hearing, make this decision that this is a permitted use by these definitions, it's a conditional use. So even then, if an applicant is going to use it, they have to make an application, come back to you with a conditional use plan. So that's, that's the real key to the urgency, is that there's an extra step in here that we're just trying to move on.
Yeah, I know, there was a lot of discussion with staff, and it, I wouldn't say, I wouldn't use the term held it up, but it, we wanted to make sure that everything was right, and so it has been ongoing for a long time behind the scenes.
It, it has for a while, and there's, I, I think in the, when it sort of resurrected over the last month, it really got on a rail, and we're all in agreement.
And thank you for pointing out the conditional use that's tied to this, because it doesn't just give blanket invitation into any business. And I'm thinking of someone in the audience now, that, that he and I have discussed some concerns of, of a particular business, and I can see him probably going, "Oh, my gosh, what is this going to do?" But, but it really is conditional use for it, and has to go back through for application and consideration. And I also would say, related to this, that personally, I think this has been a great exercise between a business owner and an architect and our town staff, looking at, looking at something that actually would be nice, I mean, to have some more outdoor areas to enjoy in our, in our great town, but trying to, to craft an ordinance and craft the conditional use that, that still protects surroundings and protects Indian. And a lot of time has gone into this, and I guess I say that just because this could have been something if people weren't willing to be open-minded and look and really delve into the details as they have done, that could have either been a quick no or a quick yes without... yes without considering the implications. That being said, I appreciate everyone's work that's gone into this. And would like to see if there's a motion.
What's the date?
The date would be, for consideration, is for the public hearing would be April 24th at 5:30.
I shall move.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item under new business is item number two, and the planning board recommendation to fund the Recreation Facilities Capital Reserve Fund for sidewalk improvements along US 158. Switch to my notes. Debbie, did you or Greg want to? This comes from, or Howard, I'd like to...
Yes, actually, this did come from the planning board, and I would defer to the planning chair.
Howard, would you like to approach the lectern and introduce this item for us?
Yes, we have discussed on the planning board numerous times about sidewalk situation on 158. And, and we decided that with, with Ben pushing us along, he's, he's a big advocate, Ben Spruill's a big advocate of sidewalks, as I am too. And we decided that we would, it was time for us to get something to you folks officially, so that you could start addressing this at budget time. And we understand that the, that we're not going to get a half a million dollars for this right off the bat, but, but we need to start building up our fund, so we can get these, get some sidewalks into the works, and we can discuss where we're going to start, which side of the bypass, we can do all of that later, but we need to start putting some pennies in this fund, so that we can move forward with this. So that's the reason you got the letter from me with my signature on it, so is there, anybody have any more questions about that?
Have we scaled the total effort?
I beg your pardon?
Have we scaled the total effort? How much would it cost to do?
Yes, yes. It's about, if you go with our sidewalk plan, we're looking at, I think, something like $2 million, Bill.
Just for the bypass?
For the, just for the bypass, yeah. But...
And over how many years?
That was a, I think they had set it up for, Greg, do you remember, was that, was that like a, like an eight-year thing, or something, or 10 years, that they had set that up?
I'm afraid to guess without the...
Yeah, I'm just guessing, because I don't remember, but...
Basically, as the budget allows, too.
Yeah, but our object was to start getting some money into that fund, so that we can start looking at, and some areas may be cheaper to do than other areas. But we did kind of lay out that we would like to start on one side of the bypass and complete that before we, instead of jumping back and forth. So to give somebody an opportunity to cross at a stoplight, get on the sidewalk, and be able to go the whole length of the town, if that was necessary, so. But that's why you got the memo, and I didn't know I was going to have to talk about this tonight, but I'm always willing to respond at the pleasure of the board. So when you're looking at the budget, give us as much money as you can, so we can get this thing started. Okay?
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions for Howard?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion on this this evening?
I think this falls right in line with what Jesse was talking about earlier, so I think we need to look into it.
How about if we take a look at the next meeting, at how much it would cost to execute the sidewalk plan?
At the, yes, at the May 13th meeting, Ben? Instead of, at the May 13th meeting, instead of the April meeting?
Whatever, whatever. Just whatever meeting, but we need to, we need to hear somebody say, well, to execute the sidewalk program, it will cost $120,000 a year, or $1,200,000 a year, or whatever it is, and the town manager has to say to us, that will only be three cents on the tax rate, and we can all guess and decide what we're going to do. But what we need to do is eventually is come up with a sidewalk plan that is, I'll use a word that I made up, executable, and vote on it once, like we did with the water system, like we did with the public...
There you go.
You know, one vote, one commission, it's done forever. That's what we need to do.
Good point.
Okay, great. So we will place that on the May 13th agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Next item is item number three, under new business, real property reevaluation report, and our finance director, Beverly Brooks, is going to provide that.
Greg, can you just advance some for me?
Sure.
I think everyone has a handout, maybe there's some extras in the back there as well. What we intended to do, there is a link on our website that Dare County has done, and we've duplicated that, that presentation pretty much, but using Kill Devil Hills figures, facts and figures. What we want to cover today is the new preliminary 2013 tax base, breakdown of property values, where our parcels are, and that type of information. We'll go through what our estimated revenue neutral rate is, and then we'll just give some selected examples of property values throughout town, and how the revaluation has affected them with our revenue neutral rate. The years we will show you in this first part of the presentation is the values way back in 2004, and then in 2012, when they shot up, and then now where they are with the new 2013 revaluation. And then the next slide, it's a little busy, but what we're showing you here is that the green is the 2004 values, the purple is the last valuation, when the properties went up pretty high, and then red is the recent values. We're breaking it down between land and the improvements, or the buildings, to show you that the decreases are predominantly, obviously, in the land values. Land values decrease pretty much 38%. Improvement values only decrease 9%. But when you look at it total, where our tax base was roughly $2.6 billion, we are now at 1.9, which is approximately a 26% decrease in total taxable values. Again, we're just showing you where our, what makes up our tax base, and this slide is by parcels, 72% being residential, 5% commercial, 13% just vacant parcels, and then 10% is condos. The next slide shows you by valuation, which would be the 68% being residential, commercial 17%, vacant 6%, and condos 9%. And that's by valuation. The other was the number of parcels, this is by values. This one's a little busy to digest, but this one shows you that we have roughly 7,500 taxable parcels. Of that value, it's 1.9 billion, and this is prior to all the appeals now. So we're looking at approximate, but we're looking at average values being at 1.4. Land types, we have some, that just breaks it down between oceanfront, the ocean influence, the sound, and canalfront, non-influence, commercial, and then condos. Again, this presentation will also be on our website, so if you, you know, wanted to look at it in a little more detail, let's just showing you the land types. And again, this one is that same graph, but in numbers. The largest decrease in value is on our oceanfront. The ocean influence and sound and canal, as well as non-influence, all decreased about, roughly about the same, in the 24 to 27% range. And that's for the Kill Devil Hills properties. Now, the condos were decreased a little less, and then the commercial decreased about 23% in total. Okay, this is the breakdown between the taxable and exempt properties. Just a little small piece of the pie, but it is not taxable. That would be government property, schools, non-churches, things that we cannot tax, the properties we cannot tax.
Schools.
All right, now this, now we're getting a little bit more in selected areas of the town, that we were concerned about hearing in the revaluation where the properties increased and decreased. Now, these are changes on properties on Bay Drive. And you can see where, again, the land is the portion that has decreased so much, that was a 40% decrease in land, and then, actually, it's an increase in improvements. These are Virginia Dare Trail, either east or west side of, but Virginia Dare Trail. Pretty much a 30% decrease in the land, and relatively stable improvement, building values. If I'm moving too fast, I can slow down, but it just kind of gives you a picture of where our valuations changed. And then here is the rest of the town. 40% decrease in their land value, and that's from the purple to the red, and then an increase in improvements, 11% increase in improvements. We're also breaking down the number of parcels between 2004, when the values were low, and then when they shot up, and then back down. So there are differences in those parcels, but in the number of parcels. Okay. Now, our revenue neutral rate, which our tax collector has calculated for us, and it is an estimate at this point, what we have, we allowed a 1% reserve for appeals, and we haven't met that yet. The average growth rate, which we are allowed to include in the calculation, is roughly 10%, or 1.10%. The levy for 1213 would be, estimated tax levy for 1213 is $6,312,645. Estimated levy at revenue neutral rate with that growth factor is $6,382,371. And the revenue neutral rate calculates at 32 cents per 100. So we're roughly going to get the same tax revenue that we had previously, but with a little bit of a growth rate that we have experienced over, how many years, 10 years? It's eight years, I'm sorry, eight years. And once we've gotten our final values, that's what we would report in our budget. That's not necessarily what we have to adopt the tax rate in the budget, it's just what we need to report to arrive at that rate. Okay, and the next, the next set of slides, we're just going to show you some different examples of selected properties throughout the town, at what their values were and what they are now. And first of all, we talk about median value a lot, and the median, just to give, so just as a definition, to let you know what a median is, it's the middle, if you lined up your numbers in ascending order, it's the middle number that occurs in the middle. And we use the median pretty much because it throws out the top extreme, and, you know, it throws out the extreme numbers, and so it hones in on the middle. And I'll tell you what the median is, next slide. The median property was, at the last valuation, $264,200. At this current revaluation, it is $193,400. It is a 26.8% decrease in the median value. And these are for improved properties. And then to tell you how that calculates, shakes out with the tax differential, the $264.2 at the 2012 rate was 23 and a half cents. That taxpayer's taxes would be $620, $620.87. The, not necessarily the same property, but the new median value at $193.4, at our revenue neutral of 32 cents, would produce a $618.88 tax bill. And that difference is $1.99.
So in our case, the revenue neutral tax rate will, for the typical owner, essentially yield equivalent tax year to year?
For, yeah, if you're in that median range, if you're in that 193.4. Basically, we looked at it, too, is how much did your property decrease? When you're looking at an increase or a decrease in your tax, did your tax, did your property decrease more than 26.8%? Or did it decrease less? You'll see a few...
So in my house, which only decreased 24%, I get to pay more tax, and the oceanfront guys get to pay a lot less.
Yeah, but not necessarily, I'm going to go through a few properties and show you how, we'll, we'll look at, now, this is the median again, but this is the median value at, this is the new, this is the new, the top slide shows you the new median. At the previous revaluation, it was $268.2, for this particular property on Laura Lane, built in 1990. It has now got the median property value at $193.4. It is a 28% decrease in value. The old town tax, it's $630,000, the new town tax, let's say it's at revenue neutral, it's a, they will pay $11.39 less in taxes at revenue neutral. Now, the property with the old median value, which we handpicked, we just selected a property on Chawan Street, built in 1988, that we found had the old median, its current value is now $199.2, it decreased only 25% in value, and, which ended up being an additional tax to them of $16.57. All right, and now we're going to kind of hit like a few, like the lowest improved value parcel, well, it excludes mobile homes, it was on Air Strip Road, built in 1946. The old value, actually, the value decreased on that property 27%. They will pay $1490 less in tax. Parcel with the highest improved residential value, it's on Virginia Dare Trail, it was built in 2003. That property decreased 45%. They will pay $404 less. Okay, these are parcel on the oceanfront, 32% decrease, a difference of $292.57. Again, if I'm moving too fast, just, you know, just really wanted to kind of bullet on where we are with selected, again, these are randomly selected, but they're selected in certain areas for it. Parcel on the soundfront, with a 28% decrease for this particular parcel on Bay Drive, built in 1995, they'll pay $68 less at revenue neutral. North end of town, west of the bypass, Soffel Street, 1978, property decreased 30%, they'll pay $30.60 less. Property on the north end of town, but it's between the highways. The other one was west of the bypass, this one's between the highways, it only decreased 18%. 50, they will pay additional 58.47. So I think you're right, right about that median cutoff, 25, 26% is where you'll see, whether it's in the red or in the black. But again, it is parcel to parcel, it's... All right, this is a parcel with a... All right, this is a parcel with a residence in the middle of town, west of the bypass, 31% decrease, it's 27% less in tax. The parcel with the residence in the middle of town, between the highways, will pay $46, it's .49 less in tax. And this was on Princess Anne Drive and built in 1987. All right, now we'll move to the south end of town. We went from the now, south, north, middle, now we'll go to the south end. Properties on Burns Drive, it has a 22% decrease in tax, and they will pay an additional $31. Apparently, south end of town is where we will make up our tax, our tax loss. Parcel on the south end of town, between the highways, a 25% decrease, and that's only a $15.29 increase. And when I said that, I say that because these two selections are the ones that are paying more taxes. Again, we might go to a property and it won't reveal that same situation at the south end of town. And then last but not least, we'll give you a commercial property that's in the middle of town. There was a 60% increase in their valuation, and their difference would be an additional $20,000. I know. We double-checked. But that's just, that's one of the commercial properties. And if you, like I said, if you go back and look at some of these graphs, again, we got all this information from Dare County. I think there's a slide in here that shows you that the commercial change was only 23% decrease, whereas some of the other properties was as much as 27 and 33%. And that is all I have for you tonight. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer if I can. Again, this will be on our website, got a handout, and...
Thank you very much for putting this together. Anyone have any questions?
Thanks, Beverly.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Beverly.
Great information. Next, we will move to Commissioner's agenda. Commissioner Pitt, would you like to...
No, I have no items.
Okay. Commissioner Reban?
I have nothing.
Mayor Fritton, have you?
Yeah, we had our long track site study committee meeting. I want to clarify something that was maybe in constant times after that meeting, that something about a crematorium back there. That was a major misprint. We're not talking about a crematorium. There was a confusion between what's a columbarium, which is an above-ground place, like where you put ashes and stuff, you know? And the school kids brought that to us, and they gave us a real nice presentation. I think it looks at this point like the committee's not going to be considering that for back The disc golf course looks like it's something that may be one of the recommendations from the committee to the board. And there's possibly some really good news about that, and we'll get into that at some other time. Also want to say that we had our BAT program over here at the Public Works, and I wanted to thank Ross and his crew for helping out. And also, words getting around, Ross and a member of his staff and myself are going to be at the Neigset Elementary School on the 19th of April. Going to be kind of an all-day thing. We're going to be having a workshop for grades 1 through 5. We're going to be taking bat houses, the ones that they've been making and we've been selling at these events here. We're going to have them ready to go so the kids can put them together and paint them. And at the same time, we'll be giving them some handouts and talking about the benefits of having these to help the insect control. And I believe they made 40 bat houses for our program here a week before last, and I think 33, 32 or 33 people came that day, listened to our presentation, and picked up their bat houses, which they had already prepaid for. And there were some other people who were going to come and get those. I'm not sure if there's any left at this moment, but we can find out if anybody wants any. And also, there's going to be a meeting on the 12th of April in Kitty Hawk Town Hall with the North Carolina Department of Transportation regarding access management and it pertains to the subject of medians on the bypass on 158. And I plan on attending that, barring any unforeseen. And after that, I'll talk to you about it at our next meeting. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Under the mayor's agenda, first thing, just to bring up again, how much I appreciate the students being here. This is the second meeting in a row that we've had presentations from students. You may recall, last year, we reached out to the high school, and we're trying to do some structured involvement with the town and with their school schedules and calendars. It just never came to developing a really structured plan with them, but I'm really excited that they feel, well, they may still be nervous to present to us, but I'm happy that they feel comfortable coming here, and it's something that I hope this board will encourage. I just think it's great to get their perspective, and for them to be, you know, engaged in the governance process and to see how it works is good for all of us, because they will be sitting here one day. In the packet tonight, there are several proclamations. The first is April, this Child Abuse, excuse me, Child Abuse Prevention Month, and there's a proclamation in here. You may be, you may have seen, they put it out, I guess, last week, right at the corner of the town coming in directly across from Harris Teeter, 8th Street, there's the display of the children, those little cutouts of the children. That represents substantiated cases of child abuse in Dare County. Each child represents a case. And it's really, the Children Youth Partnership for Dare County puts that display out each year. The numbers change as far as how many children are out there.
Too many cutouts there.
Absolutely, too many. But with that, I would ask for support from this board to approve this proclamation declaring April 2013 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Kildalville Hills.
I make a motion that we accept this proclamation.
I accept it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The next resolution is a resolution urging increased awareness of Lyme disease and its symptoms and diagnosis. This is something, I know each year, the Dare County Health Department puts out some information, especially as we get into the kind of tick-borne season, but certainly Lyme disease can be devastating. And, you know, prior to moving down to North, moving into North Carolina and down to the Outer Banks, I don't know whether I just wasn't as aware, or whether I've just heard of more cases since being here, but it certainly is something to, I think, to really draw attention to and increase awareness. And by having this proclamation to support, I'm hoping that it will further raise the awareness of Lyme disease. So I would ask for your support for the proclamation establishing May 2013 as Lyme Disease Awareness Month in Kildalville Hills.
I move approval and authorization with the mayor deciding.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the third proclamation this evening, or, excuse me, resolution, is a resolution opposing the subsurface injection of fracking waste in eastern North Carolina. This was adopted by the Dare County Board of Commissioners at their April 1st meeting. And you can read the background here as far as the resolution and detailing the opposition of the fracking. And basically, it's focusing on the opposition of the release of, basically, the potential for chemical spills and environmental accidents that are affiliated with fracking. So with that, I would ask for your support of the resolution opposing...
May I say something about that?
Please.
We came here from western Pennsylvania in 87, and I have family and friends up there who are going through a lot of, some of them very serious problems with what's been going on there with the fracking. And if you read much about it, you, you know, I think you may find it. And maybe it's working okay in some places, but there's a whole lot of problems with it. And I'm, you know, I'm totally against the fracking, so I support the resolution. I would like to make one note, sort of in regard to that, was I heard that as of January this year, for the first time ever, the production of renewable energy in our country has exceeded the production of nuclear energy. So to me, that's an example of what we should be doing. Instead of something like this, we should be continuing to pursue the renewable. That's my tree hugger speech for tonight. Thank you.
With that, would you like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion, yes, to approve the resolution.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Just an update from the Community Appearance Commission and skip that's in the audience tonight, serving on that committee. We have a meeting next week, and we've invited Michael Thompson from NCDOT to come. One of the priorities that this, the Appearance Commission is focused on addressing is the poles, the power poles, the wooden poles that can come down, trying to stay on top of working with NCDOT and the other stakeholders to get those poles removed, the ones that can be removed. But then also to start kind of having an exploratory conversation with Michael about the possibility of what can be put underground to be looking at moving that underground, and what would the cost be associated with that? So the committee at the last meeting came up with a list of questions to discuss with him. And I think I said, did I say DOT, I certainly meant Dominion Power. Did I say that?
Dominion Power.
Yeah, so anyway, the committee has several other priorities that they're working on, but this will be the one that we'll address at the next meeting, and I'll update you after that. And last, before I conclude the mayor's section, I wanted to just read a kind of a position statement from this board. Some of you may have been following for goodness over, over a year, some of the issues with our police department and things that have been in the media. So you'll, let me read this statement here. "There's been great public interest over the last two years in the ongoing issues between the town, the chief of police, several, excuse me, several former Kildalville Hills police officers, two superior court judges, and the district attorney. Over the next few days, the town will post on its website various documents which set out the findings and orders by the courts and commissions who have heard matters, entered orders, or conducted investigations. The town staff, the chief of police, and the district attorney should be commended for standing up for the facts and the law and fulfilling the obligations of their oaths. The orders and results of investigations have vindicated the positions of the town, the chief of police, and the district attorney completely." So if you'd like to get details on all of this, if you haven't been following it, within the next few days, we will have everything related to this that's been released and published on our website.
Yeah, I'd urge you guys to check that out on the website when it logs up there and to let everybody know to check it out, because you may not find that information elsewhere in the public domain. There's a lot I'd like to say about that, but I promised I wouldn't.
I can have coffee with you, how about that?
Yeah.
Schedule coffee with Mike.
I've been bent.
Okay. And that's all, so we'll move on to the town manager's agenda.
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Town attorney's agenda?
Nothing for you.
Consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am. Consent agenda, we have three items. The first is the approval of the minutes from the March 20th Board of Commissioners meeting. Second are budget amendments. The first one is to record receipt of the Peg Channel Support Funds. Number 17 is to record a contribution to the police department. 18 is to provide funds for two of our solid waste collection trucks. One is a residential, and the other is a commercial truck. They've experienced major equipment failures right before Easter, and we do need to get these back online before the summer season. And lastly, to record an increase in the Organized Crime Drug Enforcement Task Force Overtime Grant. Excuse me. Number three is a presentation of the Retiree Service Weapon and Badge. This is Detective Captain Jean Johnson, retired from the town in March of this year, and he has requested his sidearm and his badge, which is pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 2187.2, and would recommend that we do allow him to purchase a sidearm for $1. And the staff would recommend approval of the consent agenda as presented.
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is the second time this evening that's set aside for public comment, and if anyone that wishes to speak at this public comment, please raise your hand and approach the lectern. Anyone that's still with us that wants to speak tonight? It's thinned out a little bit, but it's getting late. Then we'll close public comment, and thank you all that have been here with us. Thank you for attending this evening. And with that, we could take a, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.